I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Lewisburg area Board of School Directors. If you could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Whoops, sorry, I guess I was muted.
Okay. That was different.
All right, well, we will go ahead and resume with the meeting, sorry about that. John, apparently after weeks, I did not learn how to use Zoom, so. All right. So just one quick announcement this evening, the board did meet an executive session prior to tonight's board meeting for half an hour to discuss a personnel matter. We do have every board member in attendance tonight, so that is the only announcement that we have this evening. Moving on, I will open the floor to any citizens' comments to the board on agenda items. At this time, we will entertain, if there's any citizen who would like to make a comment to the board on an agenda item, this would be the time to do it. John Fairchild, I'll turn it over to you to.
Sure thing, yes, if any of our guests would like to make a comment on an agenda item, please raise your hand and I will unmute you. Anyone at all? Oh, wait, here we go, Sarah Mahoney.
And if, sorry, Sarah, before I get to you, if you, anybody who would like to speak to the board, if you could just state your name and address and which agenda item you would be speaking to, that would be helpful.
Hi, yes, this is Sarah Mahoney, my address is 120 Gulfview Drive, Lewisburg, Pennsylvania, and I will be speaking on the proposed changes to the class rank policy. So to start, I would like to thank you for allowing me this opportunity to speak, and I would like to clarify what myself and others believe is the source of discontent surrounding class ranking. In talking with other students and parents, the problem is not class ranking itself. The problem is the educational inequities surrounding class ranking. We, as students, are ranked in many aspects of our lives, such as in sports, musical cast lists, academic competitions, and others. I am now realizing that the stressors and anxieties indicated in Lewisburg's class rank survey are a result of the educational inequities with course opportunities, rather than the practice of class ranking itself. After doing research and thinking about the points raised by Ms. Reber, Dr. Skalka, and other parents, I realized that the proposed policy changes for the class of 2021 may disadvantage students in new ways. Only recognizing two students in the class based upon ranking may create even more confusion and may negatively impact college applications. Through research and looking in recent college updates, I'm now realizing that removing class rank for the class of 2021 may disadvantage LAHS students in the application process. For the class of 2021, certain scholarships require students to be in the top 5% of their class, and a decile system would put LAHS students graduating in 2021 at a disadvantage. Additionally, many details pertaining to how class rank is calculated are no longer in the new policy. Examples of this include what constitutes a tie-in ranking, the length of time to be at LAHS to qualify for valedictorian and salutatorian, and how valedictorian and salutatorian will be selected for the class of 2022 and beyond. In closing, I truly believe that most students and parents are more frustrated with the atmosphere and inequality of options with weighted courses, rather than the practice of class ranking itself. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Yes, Kokonas family here.
I'm James Kokonas, and my address is 140 South Second Street, Lewisburg, PA. So I would also like to talk about the class rank policy. So I'm a current junior, as well as the junior class president, and I will be applying to college within the next six months. Throughout my time as a high school student, I have made decisions with the expectation that my class rank would be included on my transcript, and this allowed me to approach the other objective portion of my college applications, like standardized testing, with more calmness and less stress. For example, although I didn't score as well as I had wanted to on my ACT, I chose not to retake the test because I assumed that my college applications would include my class rank. Many students take standardized tests multiple times to maximize their scores in each section, or take both the ACT and the SAT and submit only the better score. This approach seems unnecessarily time-consuming, expensive, and stressful, and I chose not to take that route because I assumed that my college application would include another objective measure of my abilities, a measure that is based on multiple years of sustained effort, rather than one day high-stakes testing. I'm sure other juniors might have also been making decisions with the assumption that class rank would be included on the transcript, and because of this, it would be unfair to change the class rank policy for juniors this late in the process. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And next up, Katie Jacobson. Go ahead, Katie.
Actually, Katie and Sheri Jacobson are both on the same computer.
Ah, sure, okay.
Ready for parents to ask questions?
Sure, just state your name and your address.
Okay, Sheri Jacobson, 361 Forest House Lane, Lewisburg.
Okay.
So I've heard a few different rationales for this change in policy, having to do with the stress that this creates. Being one of them, I don't really find that a compelling reason. I think a lot of things in school create stress, and we live in a very stressful country, and I think the stress that might attach to class rank right now will just get remapped onto something else, some other kind of metric. So I don't know that I find that a compelling reason for this change. I do find it a compelling reason that it could kind of corrupt the decisions students make about which classes to take, in that certain classes, like the foreign languages and music, are not weighted. Others, obviously, like biology or the sciences and social studies are, and so there's kind of a built-in disincentive, if you care about your class rank, to take a foreign language or music. So that is something I think is problematic. I don't think the school should be engaged in policies that disincentivize the study of foreign language or music or art. I guess I also had a few more points, but that's fine. And, but I did have a question, and I don't know if this is a time when people can answer that question. But in the proposal, it said that valedictorian and salutatorian would be chosen among the summa cum laude students, and I just wanted some clarification, is that no longer going to be an objective GPA ranking? Because that's what valedictorian and salutatorian normally mean. Is there someone who can clarify how those two positions are going to be calculated?
Sheri, what I'm gonna do is just hold off on questions. Since this is an agenda item, the board will be discussing this you know, further down on the agenda, so right now, we're just kind of entertaining some comments. You know, we will be addressing, you know, certain things, and you know, we can certainly take note for that question when the time comes as we discuss that. You know, I am going to give some opportunity for some discussion among board members, so we will come back to that at that point, but at this point, we're just looking to kind of entertain the comments. You know, as a listening board, you know, we're listening. You know, our ears are open to all of you guys, so at this point, you know, we'll hold off on question, you know, answering questions at this point, but if you wanna, if you have anything else to say, you know, we're all ears right now.
Yeah, I guess I have a couple more things. One is, I think if the school is concerned about how class rank concerns affect the students, the classes in which students enroll, I do think there are other ways of addressing that. One would be to not have a premium for taking AP and honors classes, that your GPA in there is just your GPA. You don't get that extra percentage added on to your grade for taking those classes. That might ensure that people aren't taking them simply to boost their GPAs, but because they really want the challenge, which would maybe make it a fulfilling class for the students who do want a challenge, and it wouldn't create all this pressure for students who didn't, weren't particularly even interested in the topic perhaps, but were just taking it because it came with a premium attached to it. So getting rid of those premiums, I know there are school districts that do that, could be one way of addressing that. Another way could certainly be in the guidance counseling when students are enrolling for classes, or asking students to write a paragraph about why they want to be in one of those classes is another way of addressing it. I'm not necessarily advocating for these, but you know, getting rid of class rank is only one way to address that, and I guess it would be good if the board considered other possibilities that might be better, might be worse, but I don't think the class rank is necessarily going to solve the issue of students taking classes that come with a premium, because they're still gonna want to boost their GPAs. Yeah, so I guess those were some of my points. And it does, Katie Jacobson, who's also on this computer, wanted to speak too. I don't know if you want to put her in the queue, or if you just want to segue over to her, but thanks for listening and thanks for thinking about this.
Yes, go ahead, Katie.
Hi, my name's Katie, I live at 361 Forest House Lane, Lewisburg. Um, I just want to say, the beginning of sophomore year, I was completely adamant that I did not want to know what my class rank was. I thought it was unnecessary and, in a sense, meaningless, and I thought it would stress me out, I didn't want to be compared to my friends. And then I found it out, I think I found it out in September, so I didn't last very long. Um, but I think I was right, I think it did stress me out. I don't like being compared to my friends, I don't like being compared to my peers. But I've also found that, like Sarah so eloquently said, we're compared to our friends and our peers in essentially every aspect of school and, and life as a teenager. We're compared on sports teams, we're compared, like Sarah said, in musical, we're compared in academics. And I, I don't think there should be such a negative connotation to being compared in academics versus being compared on the A relay team. Um, as far as how class rank affects mental health, I think it does. I fully believe that it affects people's mental health. But again, I don't, I don't know if getting rid of it is the answer. I think that's something that can be addressed through counseling and assemblies and more awareness that you are more than your class rank. But your class rank can also be a part of who you are, like James said, it can be a part of your application, and it can be, it can be another way that we're compared to our friends and our peers that doesn't have to be so detrimental. Um, so yeah, that's it, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Going once, going twice. Okay, I think we're good, Jordan, I think we can move on.
All right, thank you all. I will move on to the select presentations. Paula Reber, I will turn it over to you for the high school courses and selections report.
Mr. President, did you skip board representative comments?
Yes, I'm sorry, I did. Paula, I'll turn it over to you.
All right, I already unmuted my mic and I'm getting to go.
Sorry about that.
Yeah, that's fine. Um, I just want to say, as we wrap up, you know, the, the end of the school year here, it has certainly been a challenge to our staff, to our students, to our parents, to our families, and we certainly went into uncharted territory, but I just want to express my thanks and gratitude for the hard work that everyone has put into this, when there is no clear path in all of this, and I am just really grateful for the staff and how they rose to the challenge, and also for our students and for our families. And so much of, you know, I don't really call this distance learning, I call it emergency learning, and we have, you know, lots of conversations of how it could be improved. Should we stay or have to go back into this scenario? But for having to do the quick turnaround that we did, everybody really rose to the challenge and worked together. And I also want to say, again, just to our food service staff, you know, that they did a tremendous job in making sure that food security was not something that had to be an added stressor for our families. So, that's all I have to say, thank you.
Should I go next?
Yeah, sorry, I'm so used to just going down the row, yes, go ahead.
Okay. I would like to echo what Paula said, that in middle school, the situation was a little bit different. We had no grading, the kids were in no way being held accountable by the school for the amount of work they did. However, the level of support from the families that we contacted when kids weren't getting the amount of work done that we had really wanted them to do was incredible. It was very positive, what we were hearing from the families, how we were able to reach all of our kids, even those that seemed like they were trying to hide from us. The teachers went way above and beyond in their efforts to reach all of our kids, and they really should be commended. I wouldn't recommend that we do it this way if we have to do distance learning in the future, but it was a really good test for us, for our abilities and for our desires to reach our kids and to teach our kids. I know that Lauren Peck, Changing Gears, sent a link, I think, to all board members for the quarantine edition of the Dragon Scroll. If you didn't get that, I'll make sure that you do, that's really something special that she had her kids working on, a literary magazine remotely, which is pretty cool the way it came together. I sent Dr. Skalka a link to share with you earlier this week of a virtual talent show, how we wrap up our school year traditionally is with a talent show, and we can do that again this year. Mrs. Tidy arranged that, and Dr. Skalka has that link that I'll share with you. Little things come up every day, we, on Monday or Tuesday, sorry, Mr. Katherman and I spared another brood of ducklings from a horrible demise in one of our 20 and counting. At any rate, it's been, it's been a challenge, and I'm really glad the way that the middle school people have stepped up to the plate. Thank you.
My turn?
Sure, go ahead, Jeremiah.
Okay. I would echo again what Paula and George have said, and just share from Lindtown's perspective. The last two days, Tuesday and Wednesday, were our student material distribution and collection at the end of the year, and we had approximately 270 bags of student materials from their desks, personal books, pencil boxes, art portfolios, field trip money, everything you can think of. And so the gym was staged for that, and over those two days, we had teachers and staff present, and as of yesterday at 6 o'clock, had given back all but about 24 of those bags. And I took a few pictures and put on the Lindtown Facebook page, take a look at those. Somebody came up, I still don't know who it was, came up and decorated our sidewalk with sidewalk chalk and said congrats to the class of 2027, and had balloons and things like that drawn on the sidewalk for people to see as they drove by. And the support from parents and families was overwhelming. Every time we went out to a car, our conversations ended with things like, thank you so much for everything that you've done, we appreciate your support, your communication. All of those types of comments were what we were hearing. And I just really want to give credit to the staff for that, the teachers, the food, food service workers, all of our staff, and parents and families. I feel like people have really made a quality effort to do the best that they could with a very, very challenging circumstance, and so there's always ways to improve, and at Lewisburg, we're always used to looking for those ways and working hard to be better. But I really do think people felt connected and appreciative of the work that we've been doing, and so let's keep pulling in that direction. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeremiah.
I'll just echo all the things that were shared by the other principals. You know, a lot of thanks go out to our staff for their hard work over the last few months, and into our families for communicating and working with us so closely and supporting us as we try to support our kids. We too partnered up with Lindtown, had the same pickup dates and times, so families that had kids in both buildings could try to get two buildings at one time, and did very well with about 600 students in our building. We have just about 100 bags remaining, so we'll work to get those back to families over the next few days. But just in handing out the bags, just looking at the number of handwritten notes from the teachers to the kids, in some cases, little gifts the teachers put in the bags from them. You know, we didn't have the chance to have the usual closure like we have, and that's, that's hard on the students, and it's also hard on the teachers, who give so much to their students. So it was very nice to see those things, and just what Jeremiah said, the gratitude of the parents and appreciation was amazing. One final thing I'll point out is, through all the challenges we've had locally and stressors put on our healthcare workers, Evangelical Hospital did deliver 125 bike helmets to Kelly, and we were able to get those out to families. And just a lot of thanks go out to Evan for making that happen, and they delivered the helmets, had the student names on them, already had how to fiddle them at home, a flyer inside the bag, and we were ready to go. So we got those out to families as well when they picked up their materials, so lots of thanks to Evangelical Hospital. Thank you.
I guess I can, I can just add again, echoing what everybody else said. I think one of the brighter spots that we've had just recently, when we've done different things, delivering caps and gowns, filming the virtual graduation ceremony, and having students pick up their locker belongings, was having those brief interactions with the students and their families. You can just feel the power of it as soon as the students are in the building. Staff that have helped out have commented on that, just how uplifting it was, and they felt like they had their kind of energy back just by having those interactions, so I think it's totally reinforced the focus we've had on relationships and the power that that's had, and hearing from families and staff members just commenting afterwards how, how wonderful it was to have that interaction, how much they miss, kind of that, even the day-to-day routine of school, and that they'll never take anything for granted with that, and just enjoy every minute. So just those little moments we've had with those interactions have been pretty amazing, pretty powerful, and a really bright spot with everything that we've been going through.
Thank you, guys. Steve, thanks for catching me skipping over that. So it's awesome to hear from all of you guys. So now, Paula, I will turn it back to you for the presentation of the high school courses and selection report.
So each year, this is presented just as a preliminary report of what courses will run at the high school for the next school year. I do want to say that, notice I do have it preliminary, because we certainly did not, we're not able to do our scheduling, our, our normal procedures. And I also want to emphasize that, too, that we've had students taking advantage of some courses that Bloomsburg and Bucknell and some different places have done this summer that might impact what their choices are, so we will be opening it up for another week here coming up, so that if there are any last-minute changes or requests, or if any student that hadn't scheduled yet can go ahead on and do that before then we make those individual calls for those who haven't scheduled. But at this point, and I think the key is to emphasize this is preliminary and that there has to be flexibility with this. So again, it's set up in similar formats to the following year. The first are the courses that will most likely not be offered at the high school. Now, fiber arts, I have to say that there were several students who listed that as an alternative, so there is a chance that that could run. It'll just depend on how the master schedule plays out. French 1 only had three students, we did not run French 1 last year either. Now, I want to emphasize that the majority of students coming out of the middle school are already going into their second year of a foreign language. So certainly, our French 2 and 3 numbers are, you know, very strong and still are maintained. So I don't want to give that false impression, you know, that there's not interest in a, in a certain subject area anymore. It's just, seems to be, again, coming out of the middle school, if students are going into their first year of a language, we, we tend to see, that's the first they can take German, so our German numbers are higher, and our Spanish numbers are higher, but I do want to assure that then, we do, we have talked to those families in the past. This past year, gave them an option of whether they wanted to do something online, and Mr. Fennel has also done some independent studies for those students if there was a real passion there. So I don't want to give the impression that those, or that French still isn't, you know, vital part here, and that their courses aren't. The next section are courses that had fewer than 10 students sign up, but that we are continuing to run. And those that you see below, now, accounting 2, that is actually up from, I think we had two students this past year, and that's not been able to run independently in the past several years, that has been scheduled with accounting 1, and then the teacher has been trying to differentiate because of changing things with the high school seminar class that we're putting in next year in ninth grade as a skinny course. That enables us to have that for accounting 2. And our accounting 1 numbers, with the changes that we've made, I can say are up higher than what they have, have been in the past several years, and I think that's the, the result of a lot of things, but mainly that emphasis of trying to get kids to take some of those exploratory classes during their freshman year and opening room up in their schedule to do so. German 4, there's only eight right now in that. Actually, we have, down below, I'll talk about the SUN and the ACE numbers. So we have a couple of students that were in German 4, but that aren't going to be on-site next year. So that is the reason that that will be below. And then we also see music theory 1, 2, and AP music theory. And so those are courses that we have room because of the way the, the music department is structured, that the instructor is still able to accommodate. And the AP music, it's not really an independent study, so much as basically it's kind of a hybrid type, there's nothing online with it, but in terms of when that meets with students. So, and those classes, the, the music ones in particular, and accounting 2, we have kept those in, even though they have had an enrollment of less than seven for the past three years, since there has been room. And since students also, you know, if they're at that level of taking those courses, they're truly looking at that area as a college or career path when they graduate. And so we have been able to accommodate those. And then finally, down at the bottom, I have our preliminary numbers for the ACE program. So we have 13 students so far signed up for ACE, and for SUN, we currently have 15. Our numbers do tend to fluctuate a little bit over the summer. With that, particularly with the ACE program, I know that SUN also had extended their deadline a little bit from when they were taking applications. So this was pulled basically on what was entered into Power School in the middle of May. So there, those numbers may be up just, you know, a slight bit, that I may not have the most recent numbers on.
Paula, I want to ask you a question about the SUN number.
All right.
That number was higher, but it dropped down, is there a reason for that?
Do you mean from last year to this year?
Yeah, I mean, there were, yeah, yeah, because I think, wasn't it up to 30 or 33, and now it's down to, well...
No, we were off to like 30 or 30 to 33 combined, ACE and SUN of off-site. So we had, we had over 30 students off-site this year.
Okay, totally.
So the actual breakdown, and again, I expect those to fluctuate up a little bit. I, I think a lot of it, I know Mrs. O'Connor and Mrs. Fennel have done a great job of students with I, I think a lot of it, I know Mrs. O'Connor and Mrs. Fennell have done a great job of students with students that were on the fence with either of those two programs of, you know, following back up with them and working to complete applications.
Okay. Has Jen Hain reached out to you with some current concerns? I know she said she was going to be talking to you and Steve about the, the students that were going to be attending.
Yeah, I haven't heard anything from Jen, but I can certainly make a point to reach out to her. I know that they're working through some different things like with cosmetology and when they start and things like that. So I can certainly reach out with her.
Okay. She was just saying that a lot of those numbers were IEP kids and she was wondering why that number was so high. But she said she was going to reach out to you about that.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. So I'll keep you updated, continue through on the process and, and keep you aware and abreast of that information. Thank you.
Thanks Paula. Next is the, we will move on to our board action. Under old business, we have the new curriculum materials. Mrs. Moser, I'll turn it over to you.
She's muted.
Not now. Had this list from the last meeting when you received it as information. And so I would ask that you take action tonight. These are literary titles for new selections to be used in English Language Arts class and middle school gifted. And then the texts that are listed below would be the important supporting textbook materials that teachers have requested. I'll point out my asterisk below. I'm probably coming back in June as our teachers truly begin a forward focus to the coming year. And there may be an additional one or two pieces that I would bring forward to you. But these that you have already had, if we can act on those tonight, then obviously ordering can take place. And, and we can begin preparation for the use of these in our curriculum for next year.
All right. Do I hear a motion to approve the new curriculum materials? Moved by Mrs. Brows, seconded by Ms. Stanton, I believe. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please Paula.
Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mrs. Brows?
Yes.
Mrs. Clark?
I think she's muted.
Mrs. Clark?
She may be having connectivity issues.
Let's give her a second. Yeah, go ahead Paula. If you want to keep going, then maybe come back to her.
Mr. Petzer?
Yes.
Mr. He?
Yes.
Dr. Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Dr. Unseager Fazaro?
Yes.
Mrs. Clark?
So it looks like we might have lost Lisa for just a minute. So let's move, you're right, the motion will carry regardless. So let's move on. Noted that with some technical difficulties, she will, I'm sure, join us here again shortly. But we'll move on to board action under new business.
Jordan, don't forget you wanted to add, vote to add an item this evening?
Yes, thank you. I would, thanks John, I appreciate that. I would entertain a motion to add an agenda item for the MOA. Is there a motion to approve the MOA?
To add an agenda item.
Right.
Sorry.
Yeah, motion to approve an agenda item.
Thanks. Moved by Dr. Jablonsky, seconded by Ms. Stanton. All in favor to add the agenda item?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. So we will do that, we will do that at the end of the board action under new business then. So the, so I'm just looking at a text from Lisa. Lisa texted in yes Paula for the last one. So you can note that, that she did vote. Yes, she sent the text. I believe she is having some difficulties. So we will move on. We're adding that agenda item at the end. We will circle back to that. And we will move on to the policies for first reading. I'll turn it over to Dr. Jablonsky, Dr. Zimmerman, or Mr. Rule if anybody wants to open with that.
Motion to approve these policies for first reading?
Second.
So I have a motion and a second moved by Dr. Jablonsky, seconded by Dr. Zimmerman. And this is the time we will open it up for any discussion.
Jordan, can I chime in here for a second?
Yep, absolutely. Go ahead Paula.
In regards to the class rank policy is some of you that were there that evening and basically give some more information for our guests that are joining us this evening. This presentation was given on March 12th. And as we know, March 13th is when we ended up having our last day in school. And so during that presentation, one of the key pieces of that was the need to educate and debunk the myths surrounding class rank and where it falls. And what current research and current districts and, and different things are doing. Because, you know, that evening, and I guess I did a really great job with my presentation that, you know, we, that the board viewed it very favorably. And also we certainly had a student giving, you know, some very impassioned reasons why she would like it to go, you know, to begin with next year's senior class. Again, just want to go back to my original recommendations was that this was something that would be phased in. Originally, it was not going to go into effect until the class of 23 and beyond. The class of 2021 would concurrent, would continue current practices. Class of 2022 could request to have their rank noted on their school record. As you know, I bet vocal about not changing the game on our juniors, especially to have them play by rules of one and then all of a sudden switch that on them. And I think given the, you know, what we've heard tonight and also just based on the original recommendations, as well as the fact of maintaining that transparency. I don't want people to feel like this was something that we're trying to slip in. And I think those initial discussions that were so important as part of the original proposal to educate on the why and the rationale behind it is very important. So again, I know that, you know, I can't make recommendations and things in terms of approval of policy. But I just thought it was important to weigh in with my thoughts and my beliefs. And again, on what the original recommendations that were given when the, when the proposal and presentation was first presented to the board. Thank you.
I believe that, I'm sorry, I believe that the, what came out of policy committee reflects those original thoughts for the most part, if not all. And it was carefully considered by the policy committee and that's how it got to first reading.
Would the board be open to an amendment to change in the policy? The language says class of 2022. And I think that there should be the consideration to change it to class of 2023.
Yeah.
Right. And when we, when the previous time when we talked about a semester not being included in the class rank, I misspoke when I was advocating, I, because I'm in 2024 mode at work. So I said 2022 and 23, but I meant that anyone in their current ninth grade year, and that would be class of 2023.
Erin, can you just reiterate what it is you're suggesting?
In the policy language, it says class of 22, I'm sorry, I have to pull it up for a second. Let me, I have to move my Zoom thing around just a sec.
John, you might want to pull it up since you're sharing your screen.
Okay. So I think here on this, right where the cursor is, I think what we're talking about is saying for the class of 2023 and beyond.
Yeah, you're right.
But it also would, the, what's in there right now for the class of 2021, I think is the most pressing, which is,
Right. That should be class of 20, whatever that should be, but we should not change any current policy for people who are entering their senior year because this is it. This is the last chance for them. Right? And I,
Everything, so it would, so personally, I felt, I feel that I was surprised at how quickly we put this on the agenda after the presentation on the policy agenda. So I personally, I think it should go back to the policy committee.
Motion to send it back to the policy committee.
Second.
Don't you have to amend the main motion?
Erin, would you like to, is that a motion to table that policy for now? We will table the,
Only that policy, yeah. The other ones.
Policy 214, we will table for now. Is there, there was a second to the, to the motion to table, correct? So moved by Dr. Jablonsky, seconded by, I believe, Mrs. Brows to table policy 214, send it back to the policy committee, just reiterating again. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. So motion carries. So we will table the policy 214 for class rank, send it back to the policy committee. Again, thanking the people who spoke, you know, certainly weighing in. That's something that I, I believe, you know, I agree with Paula, something that we can certainly revisit and continue those discussions. Especially under the circumstances with COVID, that was, you know, of course shook some things up. So we still have the main motion on the table.
I'd like to ask though, this is the time for discussion guidance back to the policy committee. So if the rest of the board would like to advocate for any particular thing to be considered or included in the policy. For example, you know, if you wanted to think about any of the things that were shared by the folks that spoke this evening, weighted courses, so on. Is there anything you just particularly would like to call out for the policy committee to consider to be an opportunity to do so?
I, I would just like to have a little bit more clarification on, so the, for advocating to kind of get rid of class rank or to not weigh so much on that or, or, you know, wherever we're at on that, then how do we still have a valedictorian salutatorian? Because that seemed confusing in the policy to me. Like towards the bottom, I'm sorry, it's not up on the screen again. But you know, they're, they're talking about kind of not having it, but then essentially selecting a valedictorian salutatorian. And it's like, well, valedictorian salutatorian, I think Mrs. Jacobson referred to that, that in and of that self is, if they've, it's by class rank. So I don't, I don't see how you can have a valedictorian and salutatorian and get rid of class rank. So again, I just, I just feel like there's kind of conflicting things there. Not saying that it should be one way or another, but I just feel like in and of the policy itself, there's some conflicting things there that don't kind of make sense. And then also, I just need to wrap my brain around more of then if we were to get rid of that, which is the speakers or graduation. And then does that become another stressor of like a competitive thing of who's going to speak at graduation and who's going to pick that? And I just think there's a lot more going into this than, than can be done. So I'm glad this is being tabled and taken back to committee. But I don't know, I think this is, this is a big decision to make. And I've been back and forth, like in favor of one thing and then in favor of another, talking to different parents and getting their perspective. So there's a lot of great minds on the board. There's a lot of great minds in our community. So I think we, I don't think we need to open this up to like this huge debate and, and whatever. But at the same time, I think we need to get some of the great minds together and try to come up with something that fits our district because we're known for being innovative. We're known for being, you know, cutting edge. And hopefully, part of the problem with the class rank, you know, that we talked about when Paula did her presentation was that, you know, for our district, you can be a 4.0 student and still not be top whatever of the class. So I, you know, I like some of the comments from the parents and the students that, that talked even tonight and also in the past. And so I think we do need to take heed of some of those things. And again, I don't envy the, the policy committee for having to tackle this. But I, I think that we're sort of on the right track, but I don't think we need to rush it either. So that's my.
I want to comment, this is very useful because you know, this is the appropriate way for a board to discuss policy. So it has to be in a meeting and that's how we can gather the feedback of the public and the rest of the board. So this can go back as many times as it needs to, to continue gathering feedback. Because we're not changing it for anybody next year.
Yeah, right. And I'd just like to add too, that I think there, you can still calculate rank, right? You can still figure out who valedictorian and salutatorian aren't if you want, if we choose to do that. Like there's nothing stopping us from doing that. This was, this was more about publicizing in some ways and putting that on report cards. You could request that. Right. And again, if I can just, you know, again, comment and going back to the original presentation. Again, one of the key things in that and, and the piece that's, that was being lost by, again, the, the request that we had to consider it for next year is that educational component where we do have, you know, if I had known or any of us had known that school was closing on Friday, the March 13th, this proposal wouldn't even been made on March 12th because the time and certainly wouldn't have been considered. There wouldn't have been any conversation for it, you know, for next year and changing policy at, at that point. Because I think, I think transparency with our students and with our families is very important. And they have not had the opportunity to have the information of the presentation.
Paula, is it possible for you to make that presentation or, or a, you know, sort of a cheat sheet version of it available on the high school's website or on the Facebook page or something? So that people who want to know more about the argument in favor of eliminating class rank, not necessarily immediately, but as a, just as a sort of theoretical thing that we might advocate for, they can, they can understand the arguments in favor of that?
I absolutely can do that. Or I can, you know, we, again, since there isn't that sense of urgency that initially, I think kind of spurred the, the board and us to move it forward right away in policy, also waiting until we have the chance to, to have that type of discussion that we normally, that I normally would have had with parents and students.
So, so I have a question for whoever feels the best qualified, but it, it seems to me that when we have the ability, we're always going to know who, if we want to, what the class rank is, like Mary Ann says, we're going to know who the top of the class is. We can, we can figure out who number eight is, if for some reason we need to know. Isn't there a way to simply make this an option for students that find, that find it beneficial for their particular circumstance? If they, if they're happy with where it is, or it's going to be beneficial for a college application, that we can make it available to them. And for those that don't want it or don't find it beneficial, and it's simply not available. And we don't publicize it to every kid that just wants to know. and it's simply not available, and we don't publicize it to every kid that just wants to know for whatever reason until the time comes that they actually need it to eliminate that stress factor that, that Paula described in her presentation and that, that Sarah has talked about and that the other students have talked about at the various times that they've spoken. In other words, it's there, we're not going to tell them about it till they actually need to know it. And then if they want to use that information, they can use it. If they don't want to use it, they don't use it and it's beneficial for those that it's beneficial and it's not, it doesn't work against people that, that it doesn't. Is that, is, is that not possible to somehow work into this?
Technically now, it's not public, but when anybody comes and asks for it, then, um, you know, a student comes and asks for it. And again, in the presentation, we had down on how we would be releasing, because you still have to keep rank for the purpose of merit-based scholarships. That and all of the research that we did when we talked to colleges, um, there, the, the, again, the vast majority, um, and I don't have the, the presentation up, so I can't, um, you know, quote the specifics right now. But, um, in terms of the importance of class rank and where colleges put it right now, um, and how they recalculate it anyway, because every school does it differently. And I believe it was, it had dropped to number nine on the list, um, of factors that were being considered. Um, we certainly can, can, I think that's a step in the right direction, but we, we had the means. Again, I, I, I think that the presentation actually needs to be given again to the, so that the people who that it affects have the opportunity, um, to see it and hear it. And, and I don't really see anything that we necessarily have to change right now because if we're not doing it for next year's class with this initial recommendation, then we, um, we don't have to do anything right now. And so we can have those conversations and that feedback with, with our immediate stakeholders that it affects.
I, I understand there's no sense of urgency. I was just saying in general, when it is considered, like, is there a reason for a ninth, 10th, or 11th grader to be told what their class rank is?
We don't just, except for on the end of the year report card, um, but parents and students, and especially once one has it, um, history has shown over the last, um, you know, decade, that once one student requests it and knows it, um, you know, the only reason that it's shared now and there's, is because the students and the parents are, are sharing and calculating, um, for it. Again, I brought up equity issues. I'm glad the issue of waiting came up because that is something, um, that certainly, um, has come up with, with the staff. Um, so again, um, I think all of those things are great things to be, um, discussed and, um, looked at in the future.
I guess I was just suggesting that maybe we just not tell parents and students until they really potentially have a use for the information.
Yeah, that makes sense.
One thing that I might like us to consider, and again, there's not urgency to this, but, um, I think that the, uh, the addition of the Latin honors, and it doesn't need to be an either or, we could start doing Latin honors next year if we wanted to, in addition to class rank, um, or the following year. And I, I, I do feel like right now only the top two students in the class are, receive that acknowledgement for their academic accomplishments, being valedictorian and salutatorian. And with the Latin honors, a larger group of students would be celebrated for their academic accomplishments. And that seems like a good way to highlight the academic successes of our students. Again, it doesn't need to be instead of class rank, it can absolutely, um, exist alongside class rank, depending on what we decide to do with class rank, but I'd just like to toss, toss that argument in favor of Latin honors into the mix.
A big fan of that as well.
I like that idea too, and not to jump in again, because I know that other people want to talk, but something that came to mind while Cory was talking and again about, and then Paula, you brought it up with the weighted versus non-weighted or whatever, but, um, I personally would like to know, like, how it is calculated, I guess. Um, I don't need, I don't need the numbers probably as much as like Erin would like the numbers, because I'm not a big numbers person, but at the same time, like, how is it calculated? I mean, kind of now, um, versus how maybe we could change it. I don't like the word fair in some ways because there's no such thing as exactly fair, but, um, like Ms. Jacobson brought up, you know, could there be a way where it is more fair and that we encourage kids to take classes because it's going to help them in life? It's going to help them in their next academic pursuit versus just taking a class because it's going to promote their GPA and et cetera. Because I don't like that per se, and some of it I'm sure turns into great things, but at the same time, I think that's where it gets competitive and messy and, um, unfair.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
Alright, so Erin and Virginia, I think you guys have some things to take back to the policy committee. Any other discussion on any of the other policies, um, up for approval at this point? We still have a motion and a second on the table, still the time for discussion, um, you know, either about class rank or any other policies. Anything else at this point?
Erin, did, did you find the answer in regards to the, the emails we exchanged on the school security with regards to removing the resource officer language from the policy?
Right, that doesn't apply because we no longer refer to our agreement, uh, so our agreement with the county sheriff's is not the same as the language that is implied by this policy. So those aren't in conflict. But yeah, I did bring that up to the policy committee.
Great.
Alright, hearing no other discussion, uh, as I said before, we have a motion and a second. Uh, Paula, roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Brousse?
Yes.
Mrs. Clark, is she back?
No.
Hi.
She is, uh, she sent me a text, she's still having some difficulties. So I think we might have lost her. She said her Zoom's not connecting.
Okay. Mr. Fetzer?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Dr. Jablonski?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Dr. Unzinger Fosero?
Yes.
Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Alright, so again.
I was just going to say, for the purpose of Paula in minutes, you approved, um, moving all policies other than 214 on for second reading.
Correct, thank you, Steve. That's what, I was just going to jump in and say that just for clarification, uh, for everybody. So thank you. So, uh, motion carried for those. Um, we will move on to the position addition. Uh, Dr. Skalka?
Yeah, um, so look, the board has discussed various positions, uh, additions for next year. And, um, though the board has, uh, indicated their support of a special ed teacher and John has built that into the budget at the middle school, you still need to take actual action to add the position to put it in the budget, et cetera. So, kind of a formality tonight to do the emotional support teacher at the middle school for continuity of service for those students.
No moves?
Second.
Moved by Dr. Jablonski, seconded by, sorry, I would look down.
Me.
Dr. Zimmerman, thanks. Um, any discussion? Hearing none. Uh, roll call, please, Paula.
Mr. Fetzer?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Dr. Unzinger Fosero?
Yes.
Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mrs. Brousse?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Alright, so we will move on to the, um, the added agenda item, um, the, uh, MOA with the Lewisburg Area Education Association. Uh, Dr. Skalka or Mrs. Moser, any, um, anything you guys want to add here?
Just for public knowledge, uh, since, uh, they don't know what necessarily MOA refers to, this is an agreement with the association developed by the association, uh, in conjunction with the district to, um, pay, uh, coaches for the fall season, a prorated amount in the event that a season is either delayed or cut short due to the virus.
Thank you, Steve. Moved by Dr. Jablonski, seconded by.
Mrs. Brousse.
Mrs. Brousse. Any discussion? Uh, roll call, please, Paula.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Dr. Jablonski?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Dr. Unzinger Fosero?
Yes.
Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mrs. Brousse?
Yes.
Mrs. Clark?
Oh.
Mr. Fetzer?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Alright, so that completes the board action section. We will move on to board information, uh, for new business. Uh, Mrs. Moser, I'll turn it over to you for the, uh, maintenance and repair technology fee waiver.
Thank you. I'll make sure I'm good. Alright, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Sure, I'm not muted now after all of that. Okay, each year, as part of the effort to, uh, put the devices out into the students' hands, they sign, uh, an agreement, not only reminding them of the acceptable use policy provisions, but then they sign a user fee, um, agreement, and we have that tiered by paid lunch, free and reduced lunch. And, um, we're looking at the situation in hand here where we are this year. The fact that the devices have remained in students' hands at several of the grade levels and the, um, thought on the part of Dan and, and, uh, the administration would be to not look at the 2021 school year as the year to assess and collect the fee. Still hold the students to the appropriate use, uh, policy provisions. Still put the paperwork out for the signatures, but to dispense with the fee collection. It normally yields about $40,000 coming in, and then it becomes the repair fund to work on, uh, devices that come in with damage and need to have repaired. Dan's been able to work well within his means, has not spent that money in totality from this year's funding. And we think it's a good move, uh, toward next year and the situations, um, as they are with respect to families and technology devices, et cetera, uh, to waive the fee. So tonight I present that information, um, with the idea that I'll gladly answer any questions or with Dan's help, certainly support any information that you might want. But we lay it out this evening as information.
Thank you, Kathy.
I have a question. Do we, do we anticipate more problems with, and maintenance and things like that going into the next school year though, with kids keeping them all summer?
We certainly might find that that is the case. We don't have them in our possession to work on them this summer. We certainly might find that to be, uh, the result. We also do have the monies budgeted in the tech budget, um, that again, will, will work to deal with what, uh, comes from, uh, the situation where they've kept them, as you say, Tara, for the summer.
I'm just wondering if it would be an option to, um, I'm not sure how the wording would work, but to, to make the fee very clearly optional, so that people certainly understood that they didn't have to pay it, but for the people for whom it is not a hardship, it would bolster that tech fund and help the district cover the costs of repairs. Um, and I, you know, I, I don't know what portion of people would feel they're able to pay it, but I'm sure some people would.
So the piece that I guess I should be sure to add as well, the payment of that fee and the signatures on the papers always came when the student came to pick up the device to take it home with them for the school year. In the absence of the payment of that fee, they did not have the privilege to carry it home from school. They had to, uh, have their device stay in school. We've kind of short shrifted that since the devices are, are already home with, uh, the families, with the exception of grades five, eight, and 12, where it's a transition to a different device and our graduating seniors, of course, turn them in. So when Dan first proposed this, we took a look at the monies and the situation and just the challenge of collecting it, given that we don't have the devices in our possession at this time, as one of the compelling reasons to say we could forego that collection. His repairs have run, uh, to the tune of, of 22,000 out of the 40,000 that, um, is in his budget and, and for this, uh, particular. So again, it was Dan's thought and, and proposal to bring forward that given the logistical challenges and as well as, you know, just, just the whole new norm, if you will, of our world, it might be the right one year to waive this fee. I appreciate the thought that perhaps we can work, um, in a different direction, leaving it somewhat optional or up to, uh, further consideration or discussion here as you offer your ideas.
If it's the board's preference, the recommended action that can come to you in June replaces the word waiver with, um, move to approve the voluntary payment of.
I have no objection to that. I would just say that another way that we could maybe solve a little bit of this is, like, my kids had tech issues, they just used their own devices. So the same folks that may not find the issue to pay the fee, no matter if it's optional. My, I understand that the district likes to have their own devices because you can push all of the software, you could do updates, all that kind of thing, but for a lot of the home-based learning, we found that using our own devices has been just as effective. So, especially because everything's web-based, right? We're not talking about software local to the devices anymore. And so I, I would see other options that if we find ourselves spending a lot of money on district-owned devices, we might say to families, you know, these are the options. In a given year, we can either have a delay at our replacement cycle, which would save the money, or we can have people use their own devices so that we can redeploy devices that are still good to replace ones that have been damaged or whatever. Like, I think we have multiple options to solve this problem of making sure that, um, people have the right hardware at home in order to access the internet and do whatever they need to do. So I don't think that this isn't, it's like, this is not the end-all-be-all of all technology solutions. I think we've got multiple ways to skin this cut.
Kathy, is there something that you are looking to bring back? I mean, it's, it's on here for board information. You're looking to bring it back, uh, next meeting to the board? As an action item?
Agenda, as well as entertain the thoughts and ideas as, as being provided tonight, or perhaps follow-up, uh, thoughts and ideas from board members. Again, um, there's some challenge to the collection of the fee. There's some, um, you know, thought that this may be a right, um, action, uh, in support of our families. And at the same time, I appreciate Dr. Jablonski's thoughts that there are maybe some other ways to also, again, examine this and look at it, uh, in terms of the best course of action. So I'm good for tonight.
I, I have one question. Were iPads turned in?
iPads were turned in, in grade four, three and four, but not five. And then six, seven, eight, of course, are, are computers, as is nine through 12.
I think iPads were turned in in five.
Five, but not. I turned it around. I turned it in because they go to sixth grade and they get the, the computer. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Alright, any other discussion about that? Thank you, Mrs. Moser. Uh, we'll move on to the employee assistance program. Uh, Dr. Skalka, turn it over to you.
You're probably familiar, maybe, uh, in your own place of business, uh, with organizations that have employee assistance programs. This is very similar to our student assistance program. program, provides counseling opportunities, wellness opportunities, as well as employee assessments in the event that one is necessary. We believe that for the cost, we have two bids for the cost, one is $3,900 and one is $4,600, that this is an excellent opportunity for us in going into next year as we come out of, hopefully, COVID, and is also extremely consistent with the recently adopted goal regarding social emotional health for both our students and staff in the most recent strategic plan, excuse me. So, presentation tonight for your consideration, action next time, and we are able to use CARES dollars at least next to underwrite this for next year.
Thank you, Dr. Skalka. Any questions or anything about that at this point? We will move on to the board president's report. The only thing that I have this evening is just a more informal report. Just wanted to, just wanted to give a shout out to the, to everybody who was involved in the planning of the graduation ceremony that was recorded and will be, it will be shown. That was definitely something that, you know, as the students were coming up on stage, just a really cool, you know, in the middle of everything going on, even though it was slightly different this year, I've received so many text messages, phone calls, emails from parents, just really expressing their gratitude that the district did, you know, did what we did, you know, people thanking me and me joking and saying, "Don't thank me." The only thing I did was show up. So, you know, again, just a huge shout out to everybody that was involved. I know there's a lot of planning that went into that, and, you know, I think it was very special to a lot of people to still be able to walk across the stage, have that filmed, and be able to have that shown as the actual graduation ceremony. So, you know, like I said, just wanted to report tonight, just the gratitude, the overwhelming, you know, overwhelmingly appreciative emails, texts, you know, all the communications that I know I've received, and I'm sure many of you have received. You know, that was a lot of hard work, but it was very, you know, very appreciated by the students and their families. So, again, just a shout out to everybody. Kathy, I will turn it over to you for the assistant superintendent's report.
Great. My report went out to you with everything earlier. As you can see, bulleted comments, just kind of a wrap-up of a number of things that I wanted to be sure to share forward with you. If there are any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Kathy, I just had one. I noted in your report about the summer program not going forward, which I presume is some sort of state guidance, but it differed from, I think, what you had mentioned in a previous meeting.
Oh, yes. We were so hopeful to be able to run summer SAC. There are layers and layers of precautionary measures that need to be taken, and even while we were working through many of those logistics and trying to figure how we might still be able to provide a summer childcare program, as our families and the community would appreciate, we also found ourselves without sufficient staff to be able to feel comfortable running it, and again, just more unknowns than knowns, and it came time to let our families know for certainty, as they needed to make plans in their own contexts and situations. So as I shared today with another board member that reached out, they were the 41 tough phone calls that I made last Friday to try to, you know, just provide them with the clarity of understanding of how we could not operate this summer, that we look forward to being back with the school year, and again, just what it takes to be navigating the kinds of things we're working through at this point in time.
Thank you, Kathy. We'll move on to the board liaison and committee reports. Anybody have anything to share from any committee that has met?
No, I passed on my minutes of our main meeting. I'll have some comments under director's comments regarding SUN.
Thanks, Mary. Any other committee reports?
Yeah, the IU met last week. They're doing just so much amazing work, actually, and Steve can speak to this probably more directly than I can, coordinating efforts among districts and working with superintendents on a regular basis, bringing in legislators to sort of get on the same page and also have them be aware of all of the work that's happening. They're doing some really specific work around cyber and remote learning and trying to help districts get up to speed with that, because at this time, I don't know if you have all noticed, but a lot of remote learning opportunities are targeting our kids and families, trying to sort of pick up on the uncertainty that's going on right now. And so I feel really good about the work that they're doing and the services that they're providing to all the districts. Steve, I don't know if you have anything else you want to add about that. I just was.
No, it's, yes, we've met as IU superintendents every single week since March 13. We continue to try our best not to plan too far ahead as things change, and this morning, we were actually joined by Pedro Rivera. So it was, it was good to hear from him, not a whole lot new, but at least it's great to hear from the Secretary of Education.
Any other reports? All right, I will move on then to the consent agenda with the personnel report. Just a note, the personnel report that does include the extra compensatory positions. Is there any item that any board member would like to have pulled out and voted upon separately? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Moved by Mrs. Brows, seconded by Dr. Jablonsky. Any discussion?
Yeah, I would like to.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, I'd like to point out the Giant contribution of $1,344 earlier in the week, just got an envelope out of the blue, and basically Giant is saying that we very much appreciate our community, want to be a good community partner, and I don't know how necessarily the figure was established, but there were no strings attached to it. It's not a giant gift card that we have to go back and spend there. They just, again, wanted to support their community and their schools.
Great.
And likewise, also, I'd like to give a shout out of thanks to Generations Asset Management that employs some Lewisburg grads. They wanted to reach out and they wanted to make a donation to help ensure our kids had food, so we are grateful for their support as well.
That was going to be my comment. I'm just going to thank all the donations and especially the food situation.
And I would have been we're sending thank you notes to these folks and agencies.
Yes, ma'am. Got the cards in front of me.
Any other discussion? All right, Paula, roll call vote, please.
Dr. Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Dr. Unzinger-Facero?
Yes.
Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mrs. Brows?
Yes.
Mr. Fetzer?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Mrs. Clark is back on. Sorry, and I'm a yes. Sorry.
Welcome back, Lisa.
Thank you.
All right, so with that motion, we will move on to the closing section. Just like I did last meeting, I'll just kind of open the floor for any director's comments. Again, it's hard to go around a room at this point, so if anybody wants to jump in for any comments, directors, feel free.
I'll start in with my comments about SUN. First of all, Steve, will you be at our June meetings, or is this your last board meeting?
Yes, I will be at the JLC meeting in June.
I mean, our Lewisburg board meeting. Is this your last board meeting?
Yes, it is.
I want to wish you very well in your next endeavor and your next phase of life.
Thank you so much, Mary. Always appreciated you and the support you've provided.
No problem. I do wish you and your wife well. We are getting back $15,330.63 as our, back to Lewisburg from SUN Tech. That will be applied to the credit of our fall students, if they have it. I know I was at the drive-by handing out the kids their certificates. That was very well organized, very nice. I mean, the kids and parents appreciated that, and I want to thank Jen and her staff, and the teachers were great handing out the certificates and the custodians. It was just a well-organized thing, and they really did a great job. But that, there was some discussion. Jen heard that one CT center was going to not open up in the fall, that they were going to stay closed all year, so we're hoping that isn't going to be happening over there, but it is a remote possibility, because these kids won't be able to get their hands-on training that they vitally need. But, and the summer camps, I think I mentioned this before, are canceled, and I know there's going to be a lot of students in the area that are going to be disappointed they cannot attend, but just wanted to bring those highlights to you that weren't in the minutes. Thank you.
So I'm happy to go next, because actually, on my Zoom thing, I'm right below Mary. So I always seem to land there, Mary. I don't know what that's about.
Keep the two Marys together.
I think so. I think so. Steve, I want to thank you as well and wish you both the very best. Say hey to Michigan for me. And I just want to thank each of the administrators and the teachers, and each staff member who worked so hard to shift so sharply amid this crisis. I mean, when dealing not just with our children, your students, and their anxiety and their worries and their varied levels of attention, but you also had to deal with your own families, both the ones under your own roofs, families under different work circumstances, families who maybe were in nursing homes or away from you, and you had lots of worries of your own. And so I just want to thank you so much as a parent for everything that you did.
I would like to say the same. This is a crazy couple of months. Tomorrow is COVID Day 78 in my house, and, man, the amount of work that the teachers have to put in to get everything posted, to get, we got the bags back, right, even just to put those bags together, and to, I'm so glad for, again, I'm just going to reiterate, the food distribution was so important, and for people who had to pivot so quickly, Steve, your leadership, this is probably the craziest, you know, final few months you could imagine for any role you've ever had, and for everybody who's, and, you know, it's, as Mrs. Moser mentioned, it's a scary time for people, too, right? So I'm, I was really glad to see that everyone is putting their heads together. How do we make our students and the faculty and staff, everyone feel safe coming back to school in the fall and participating in the programs, the sports, the arts, everything that they want to do? So just, it's a huge job, and making people feel like, like it'll be all right at some point, or some version of normal. I just can't imagine the emails and phone calls you get.
I want to also thank Steve. It's been, I'm just very grateful for all of your efforts, especially all the work that you've done to support social emotional learning from, you know, from the students all the way up to the staff. So I thank you and I wish you well. I also want to just echo the sentiments of thanks to the administrators and the teachers, and just a small point, but one deep and deeply important to me, I'm so grateful to see that list of books, Kathy Moser. Those are some really awesome books, and I'm delighted that our kids are going to be reading them.
Hey, Jordan. Jordan, if I can share, I was, though we're not able to, on our own, provide lunches and meals after today, I did put out information today to parents, and I wanted to direct anyone who might be watching to our website. There will be food distribution in June. We want to thank our community partners, the Eastern Union Community Supplemental Food Program, First Baptist Church Lewisburg, Greater Susquehanna Valley YMCA, Lewisburg Elementary Parents/Student Association, and the Green Dragon Foundation. We thank them to have partnered with the district to continue providing meals and food to school-age families in the summer.
I would just like to say, you know, that I said at last meeting, you know, I'm looking at the donations this evening. Again, I mean, I think it's incredible to see in our community the number of people, you know, stepping up and wanting to give back, you know, wanting to donate things. You know, we live in a great community, and we're very blessed to have the support of the community as a district. So, you know, taking a look at that, it's, you know, it's always pretty astounding to see this happening. So to see it, you know, an envelope showing up out of nowhere, again, that, you know, certainly doesn't happen everywhere, so we're very fortunate to have this for the community that we do. Any other comments from anybody else? Any director's comments?
Not sure what else can be said that hasn't already been said, but Steve, you know, wish you well in your future endeavors. Good luck to you, and thank you for your leadership during this time. It has absolutely been crazy, and thank you to all the administrators, all the teachers, everyone in the district that really pulled together. I share the sentiments that have already been expressed. I don't know what else to say other than thank you. It really is just amazing how we were able to get through it the way we did and come out the other end still relatively in one piece. So, thank you to everyone.
All right, at this point, I will move on to the citizens' comments to the board on non-agenda items. Is there anybody at this point that would like to, any citizen that would like to make a comment to the board on a non-agenda item?
Mr. Farren, if you have any questions, please feel free to ask them.
Hi, this is Matt from the Standard Journal, Matt Farren. Can you all hear me okay?
Yep.
Yep.
All right, thank you. Well, first, Steve, congra, good, best of luck to you. One question. Why, if this is your last board meeting, when will the new superintendent be in the district and attending board meetings and taking questions from the press?
Matt, the Dr. Polinchak's contract begins July 1, so she will be in, I don't have the agenda, the agenda calendar in front of me at this point, so I'm not sure. In July, we only meet once, so I'm not exactly sure off the top of my head when that would be, but that would be Dr. Polinchak's first meeting with the district, whichever, whatever the date is in July, that would be the first meeting.
Okay, very, very well. Couple of questions about table policy 214, class rank. What is the, in a nutshell, what would the new policy replace? How are all the old class ranks determined?
Matt, probably a little bit more involved than a Zoom at 8:30. So how about you and I talk tomorrow morning, and/or you and Paula Reber talk tomorrow morning?
Okay, all right. Well, that leaves me with, what do I write tonight? Yeah. The new policy would drop class rank, and we're, were it put into place now, and replace it with honorifics like cum laude, magna cum laude, and so on, and the top two valedictorian and salutatorian. Was I hearing that correct?
I guess, again, on the district website is the current policy 214. The one that was tabled tonight is part of the public agenda that you can access via Board Docs. So they're both there for comparison, but you kind of have it in a nutshell, and not to write your story for you, Matt, but I guess I'd say that there's more to come as the board continues to wrestle with this issue.
Okay, very well. Thank you.
You bet.
I would just like to add really quickly, and Matt, if you're looking for something to publish tomorrow, please, our senior drive is. please, our senior drive is going to be taking place on Saturday afternoon at 5:00. I put the route out on our Facebook page and emailed that to our senior parents today. So please, please come out and show your support for our seniors. This is replacing our senior walk that we used to do or normally do in the four buildings. So we've encouraged staff to be at their respective schools in the parking lot beeping when the students go by. We have both the fire department and Buffalo Valley Police helping to coordinate this. So that's at 5:00. And also, once Mr. Vick, Vickar, who is our parent, who is very, very graciously donated his time, which is substantial, all the time that he spent being here to film each of the individual and diplomas and then also the amount of editing that went into this. So as soon as we have that uploaded, again, it'll go live at our normal graduation time, which is Saturday at 2:00. But I will be sharing with all of you and also out what the late due commencement will be then.
Okay. Thank you, Paula.
All right. Are there any other citizens' comments to the board on non-agenda items?
Anyone else? I don't see any hands, Jordan.
All right. So I will move on and entertain a motion for adjournment.
Second.
Moved by Dr. Jablonsky, seconded, sorry, I missed that again.
It was me.
Dr. Zimmerman, thanks. Any discussion? All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting adjourned. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.